Okay, well, welcome everyone to tonight's first civic conversations with the Wake County Democratic Party. We are so thrilled to kick off our conversations with our candidates and current commissioners that serve on the Wake County Board of Commissioners. And tonight's conversation and theme is what exactly does a county commissioner do? And who are we going to be voting for on November 8th for our county commissioners? And so we really look forward to the conversation that we have tonight. First, I like to introduce myself, I'm Brian Mathis, I serve as the second vice chair of the Wake County Democratic Party. And so I'm thrilled to be joined with by our panelists who I'll invite to introduce themselves in a moment. But I would like to give a special appreciation and acknowledgement to volunteers that have served on the committee that puts this event together. We have Kathy Clash, who serves as a precinct chair here in Wake County. We also have Jonathan Norman and Harrison Martin are other volunteers who've gotten together. And so if you're also thinking like, oh, I want to do great projects and get turn out the vote and get Democrats elected. You can absolutely volunteer of the Wake County Democratic Party and we'd love to have you and I'll send information out at the end. I also just want to take a moment before we introduce our county commissioners and our candidates for tonight. To acknowledge and welcome any other candidates that are also here. We heard from Willie Rowe, of course, who just won his primary and will be our candidate for sheriff. This come November, but if you in the chat, if you're another candidate, that is, that will see your name on the ballot on November 8th. If you want to give a quick message in the chat, we certainly want to honor and recognize you. I think I saw Megan Patton, who is in, who's running for city council and one of our endorsed candidates for District B. So welcome Megan Patton for that. Any other candidates that are here tonight as well? Okay, feel free to drop in the chat if you, if you are, don't be shy. But let's go ahead and turn to the ones that we are talking about tonight. And so I'd like to invite our candidates for Wake County Board of Commissioners to introduce themselves. And the question, if you all will, you have a couple of minutes to introduce yourself and we can go in order. I'll just to help create order, I'll just call on you all. But feel free to introduce yourself and then kind of a question to get us started, if you will, is what motivates you to serve the people of Wake County? As you seek either election to the Board of Commissioners or reelection to the Board of Commissioners? So Commissioner Matt Calabria, can we start with you?
Sure. Well, again, thank you for having me and I really want to appreciate you, Brian, and everybody who has worked to put this together. I also want to thank the party more broadly because as has been said in prior years, the county party is really the local caucus. You know, there's a state senate caucus, a state house caucus, there are all sorts of party organizations for different kinds of races. But y'all are it for county commission and for municipal races and for school board races. So you know, we all really appreciate the work that you all do and thank you again for putting this on. Again, I'm Matt Calabria, I have been on the county commission since 2014, which is hard to believe is eight years ago now. But I'm a Raleigh attorney and a resident of Fuquay Varina, where I live with, or where I still live with my wife Molly and our two year old daughter Eleanor. I grew up in Cornelius, North Carolina and Mecklenburg County, went to UNC as an undergraduate, was lucky enough to serve as student body president there. And went on to Duke for law school and moved to Wake County and have no intention of ever leaving. So low about 2013, we were really facing a number of issues in the county. We had a Republican control, Republican controlled county commission that really was not doing what they needed to be doing when it came to public education and support financially and otherwise. For what our public schools were doing was not moving ahead on public transportation. Affordable housing wasn't even a conversation for them back then and so many other issues. And I had gotten into a couple of conversations with folks having been involved in the party over time. And somebody finally said to me, well, you know, you could run. And that kicked off this adventure nine years ago now. And I absolutely love doing this work. My dad was a public high school principal and my parents were always involved in the community in different ways. And so maybe I got the bug from them, maybe I just got involved and saw how rewarding it can be. But what I've been trying to do is not just maintain, but improve our quality of life as we grow. And that means making smart investments in our people and in our infrastructure. And that I think really thematically has summed up what I've been trying to do. That's included, you know, increased support and I want to highlight my, one of my partners in crime, Vicky Adamson on the county commission and all the county commissioners now on an all Democrat board. For really making good on our commitment to public education through increased funding, increasing teacher pay, really catching up on school construction. Because our predecessors really allowed us to fall behind. And then, you know, some other things I'll talk about in just a few minutes. But we passed a transportation plan, have done a lot in the human services realm. And, and really focused on trying to finally create an economy that works for everyone, not just with the traditional business development stuff, but through worker training and so many other aspects. So I'm being very brief on that because I'm going to be talking more about that in just a few minutes as part of a presentation about what county commissioners do. But I really do love this work and I think that we have really found solutions that enable everyone in the county to improve their quality of life. And have really been motivated by what we can get done on the local level. And so that's what I'm about and that, and I'm running to continue that work.
Well, fantastic. Well, thank you for that introduction and we'll turn to your partner in crime next and hear from Commissioner Vicky Adamson.
Thank you, everybody for tuning in. I'm Vicky Adamson, I'm in the end of my second term. And I grew up in on the small farm in rural Iredale County. And I moved to Raleigh in 1983, when I graduated from East Carolina. And I've been here ever since. So I tell people I got halfway home and stopped and never finished the trip. And so here I am, and I have a 23 year old son. Who went to all Wake County public schools and just graduated from college last May and now has his first real job. And I didn't know that was going to break a mama's heart for your son to look so old and so mature with his, his real employment. And, and I have a husband, we've, you know, we were married in 1996. And what, what really motivated me, oh, he just smiled at me, 1997, sorry, I always get the year wrong. We met in 96 and yes, I am the one who forgets our anniversary every year. And he, and he waits till the end of the night to remind me. So I feel bad about it. Some year I'm going to remember it and we, we, when I was a stay home mom. So I got involved when our son was born in 1999, I didn't go back to work. And my background's finance and accounting, I have an accounting degree and I spent 15 years in corporate finance. And I never went back to full time accounting employment and I became a full time volunteer. And with that work, with your own hours, you can affect like this many people, you can affect a small subset of people. And I started lobbying the school board at the time for more resources for public education. And that was sort of my first big dip in the toe in the political arena. And realized that I wanted to really affect policy, which means I need to be on the other side of the desk. So when my son announced he was going to out of state college and I knew I wouldn't be seeing him hardly anymore. That's when I decided to run for office and, and I chose county commission and that's worked out very well. It really fits my personality and what makes me want to keep doing this work is the people that we help. And unfortunately, the people that we help with county services never get attention, they don't make the media. They, they're not clickbait for the media, but there's a lot of them out there. And Matt has been a great partner in working with human services. And, and I'll share my, what I think is my biggest accomplishment so far is we work with healing transitions. Which is basically the public alcohol and drug treatment program. And we were able to get them, thank you, Matt, the largest grant the county has ever given an organization. And it finished their capital campaign or they in the process of doubling their bed space. So this just doesn't help somebody now like a volunteer doing a food bank, all that work is very important. This will help people for years and years to come with those beds. And they're kind enough that they invite me to their graduation ceremonies. And I can't get there fast enough to see these people that are supported by county funding. Who have graduated from this alcohol and drug treatment program and are going on to productive lives. They have jobs, apartments, they broke the cycle and I get chills just thinking about that. And to know that your tax dollars in our county services provide that opportunity for them. So that's what gets me out of bed in the mornings and to do this work. Thank you.
Fantastic. And our next two panelists are no stranger to, are not strangers to public service. But we, I would like to welcome council member of Apex Town Council, Cheryl Stallings, who's seeking election to the Wake County Board of Commissioner. So Cheryl, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Brian, and it's such a pleasure to be with you all tonight and thanks to the party for hosting this. But you're right, I'm Cheryl Stallings and I'm running for the district three seat on the county commission. That's Commissioner Savania is vacating that seat and running for a house seat. So her seat is open. The reason I'm running is obviously very strongly in public service and public service, working for the public good. And that's sort of in my DNA, I think, just like it is probably in a lot of you, your DNAs that are on the call tonight. I was, we've got some farm connections, Vicky, I grew up on a family farm in eastern North Carolina. And, you know, growing up on a farm teaches you a lot, it teaches you about hard work and being good neighbors and taking care of the environment. And for me also, it was about, you know, developing a faith that doesn't discriminate. And I think that's important to say in the political climate right now. After high school, I went to East Carolina and NC State. And with the help of financial aid and scholarships and part time jobs, I was able to earn a doctorate degree and became a school psychologist. And I've worked in a number of public schools in our state, including Wake County, providing mental health services to children and consultation services to teachers and administrators. My husband Mark and I have been in Wake County for over 30 years now. We lived in Zebulon, Raleigh, and then moved west to Apex. And we came to Apex in 1996 to raise our son Charlie. And we've been there ever since and I'm a strong proponent of public education too. I think that's a trait that's going to run through this, this county commission and run through it strong. Charlie's a proud product of the Wake County Public Schools and also the UNC Public University System. I'm a product of North Carolina Public Schools from kindergarten to graduate school. So public education is very important to me. When Charlie was in preschool, I transitioned, I worked to a mental health practice in Raleigh and I've been there since 2000. Providing mental health services throughout Wake County. And I'm also co-owner of the, the practice, which makes me a local small business owner as well. And so in 2019, I ran for and won a seat on the Apex Town Council and we were elected in November 2019. And then the pandemic hit a few months later, so we went into pandemic mitigation mode really quick. But we worked hard to support our businesses and town staff and residents, you know, with, with those efforts. In addition to sort of the daily work that you do on the town council, which is budgets and making decisions about infrastructure and housing affordability and diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. And then of course growth, you know, trying to manage growth in a thoughtful, planful way that takes in consideration environmental stewardship, school capacity and traffic needs. So, so the town council has given me a lot of good experience as well as being a psychologist, I think, that I can bring to the county commission. And I'm so looking forward to this opportunity of just more expanded public service and working with these great folks that are on the board. Really, really just continuing the vision, you know, continuing the work of equitable opportunity for a healthy and sustainable economy, community and environment for all. So thank you. My website is CherylforWake.org and I look forward to more conversation with you all this evening.
Fantastic. And of course, we're also excited to have Don here with us tonight, who has lots of creative experience from many different boards and serving in the military as well. We appreciate your service there. So Don, introduce yourself.
Well, first of all, I want to say good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for hosting this event this evening. You know, the Democratic Party in terms of what you guys do, we can't say thank you enough. Having served on the party as Wake County Vice Chair, you know, we've seen what you guys do. I've been there and in trenches fighting right along with you. But also, you know, I'm a Wake County product, born and raised in Wake County and proud of my heritage. My family's been a part of Wake County since their early 1800s. And so it's easy for us to trace our family tree back. Also, I'm a part of Wake County Public Schools. I graduated from J W Ligon High School. I put three kids through Wake County Public Schools. My oldest daughter's graduated from East Wake, my youngest daughter graduated Southeast and my son graduated from Inlow. So you can see we have a little bit of spirit here with Wake County Public Schools and, and we value education. I can't say enough because the education for me is the root in terms of where we must do and where we must place most of our energy at. Because our kids are no longer just competing only with North Carolina or Raleigh or the state or the United States. We are competing on a global market. And because of that, it's so important that our kids get a quality education. And one thing you'll hear me talk a lot about is pre-K. And the reason being that I find that pre-K is the base. If we don't give them that foundation, then our kids will never catch up and they're potentially behind. But more importantly, to tell you a little bit more about myself, I retired from the military with 30 years. Also during that time, I was in the National Guard. And I also was working with the state of North Carolina and I retired from the Department of Public Safety as well with 35 years of service and 30 years of service with military. I hold a BA degree in history, I hold a MA, Public Administration, also Criminal Justice and Associate degree as a paralegal. So you know, you can tell I place a lot of emphasis on education. And the reason that I continued to fight and push and want to be a county commission, because I want to continue to serve the people. You know, back in 2000, thanks, 2002, my unit was called up and to deploy. And we actually deployed in 2004, we went to Iraq and I spent all of 2004 in Iraq and returned in 2005. And my philosophy was that if we can go to Iraq, defend and make sure that they have a wholesome environment to raise their kids. Then by golly, I can do the same thing here at home. So therefore we want to continue fighting for our citizens here. And one thing that I want to thank Vicky for, because she's already started on this and I will continue to support this. Once I would get it coming elected and that's supporting our veterans. You know, I never thought that we would be the county have the most veteran. My first thought was going to become the county called the Fort Bragg. But after listening to Vicky and then talk with the different veterans, Wake County has the largest population of veterans. And because of that, we must do more to support our veterans. And we also must do more to support them with their homelessness, drug addiction and things that they are experiencing and also mental health. Because we know that our veterans are committing suicide, regular 22 veterans per day, which is astronomical when you take it into context and look at the numbers. So therefore that's just a little bit about me and as we move forward, you know, there's a lot more that I want to put out and want to talk to people. I want to hear from everyone and I just wanted to thank everyone supporting me as we moved through the primary. But it was a hard fought primary. I know Cheryl was out there, Matt was out there and Vicky was out there and all you guys came out and voted for us. So we just wanted to say thank you so much and we continue to move forward and we're going to be working hard for the people of Wake County. Again, Don Mile and it's easy to remember my website, DonMile.com. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Well, great. Well, thank you for all of you to introduce yourselves. So I'm going to share with the rest of the group here to how the rest of tonight's agenda, what we're going to do. So first, we're going to have Commissioner Matt Calabria give us an overview of what exactly do the board of the Wake County Board of Commissioners do? And what does a commissioner do? So a day in the life, if you will. And so Matt will, has a great little presentation for us, so we can learn a bit more about that. And then after that, we have a few questions, we'll kind of turn it over some Q and A to both me and hear a little bit from all of our candidates. And we'll create some space for you all to ask questions as well. So, but first we'll turn it over to Matt for the presentation and we look forward to, to learning a bit more from you.
Thank you very much, Brian, and I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, but hopefully my voice will hold out through the presentation. So I'm going to share my screen here. And hopefully this will work. There we go. So you should see it up on your screen. So the first thing I'll just describe to you is the structure of Wake County government and really of government in every county. Although there are variations from county to county in terms of number of commissioners, how the commissioners are elected, et cetera. But in Wake County, we have seven commissioners. Every commissioner must be a resident of a district or an area of the county. But the day we file, they say, great, we certify you live in District Two in my case, or some other district. And, and after that, you're just campaigning countywide. So our electorate for every single seat is countywide and I will tell you, I really like the system. In large part because there's never an incentive to try to figure out how to get something in your district or anything like that. It's just what's best for the county as a whole. We answer phone calls from every quarter of the county and every one of us, I think, would, you know, would respond to people's phone calls no matter what. But you have every incentive to treat every single resident of the county fully and fairly. Because every single one of the 1.1 million people here is your boss. And I really do like that and I really do love our system. That's probably the plurality system, if you look at counties across the state. But counties do have leeway at least once every 10 years to decide whether they're going to be in districts or what run countywide or be in some sort of hybrid. That's the, that's what we have chosen here. The county budget, to give you an idea, is about $2 billion. Depends on, you know, it goes up or down depending on how you count capital and bond money and all sorts of things. But, you know, so we've got 1.1 million people in the county, a $2 billion budget. The state, just to give you an idea, has about a $25 billion budget. You know, for about 10, 10 and a half million people. So, so you can see the gravity that Wake County in particular has because it's the largest county by population in the state. So if you think about the fact that Wake County has a 10th of the schoolchildren, a 10th of the single moms, a 10th of the seniors, more than a 10th, Don of the veterans. You know, that really puts the onus on how important Wake County is in the scheme of things in the scope of the job. And I think we've got a lot to be proud of, but before we get to some of the things that the county commission has done. Let me talk a little bit about what the county does because for a lot of people who aren't really steeped in this stuff. It's sort of in this strange region between municipal government on one hand and state and federal government on the other. A lot of what we do actually feels a lot more like state government than you might, than you might think. So in Wake County, we have 12 municipalities, Raleigh's the largest, but we've got 11 others, you know, in addition to that. And whether, whether you're in a municipality or in an unincorporated area, i.e. outside of the jurisdiction of that municipality. We provide various services to you. You'll see those on your left hand side. So it includes social services, housing, that would include veterans services. Virtually at just about every federal program you can think of, particularly for underprivileged populations, is administered at least in North Carolina at the county level. So if you're talking about food assistance, economic assistance, housing assistance, all that is administered and at the county level and it's supplemented at the county level. So if you care about all those sorts of human services issues, you care about what the county can do because we can affect that. And frankly, with seven of us who are very often interested in the same issues and doing similar things, we can get a lot more done, a lot more quickly at the county level. Then we can, you know, then you might be able to at other levels of government. What comes, came to the fore in the last two years is that we run all the public health. So you'll see a story on, I think it's W R A L tonight, that just came out about how we performed 1.6 million tests. COVID tests over the last couple of years through what ended up being just about the best testing setup in the entire country. We provide about a third of our public school systems operating budget. We provide almost all of the funding for the capital budget of the school systems to build and renovate schools. We do child welfare, we fund the jails, as you can see, all libraries throughout the county, all public libraries are administered and run by the county. We have one of the very best library systems in the country and they probably win awards on a more frequent basis than any other operation that we've got. But also, if you call 911 and you need an ambulance, well, that's a county service that is being provided to you. We run EMS as well. So outside of municipal jurisdictions, we do in addition, a number of things that you might associate with municipal government. And I know Cheryl, you in particular are very familiar with these sorts of things. So again, we, we provide for law enforcement through the sheriff's office and others. We do building inspections and planning and permitting. We do animal control stuff, as you can see, we test and maintain water quality. And we do fire protection, which means we have about 15 individual fire departments that are technically nonprofits, believe it or not, that we fund and that we oversee. But that provide fire service in all the unincorporated areas, but also in a couple of the municipalities who have signed on with us as well. And to give you an idea, about 200,000 people live in the unincorporated area of the county. So you figure that's about the size of Cary. So it's a pretty significant area, even outside the municipal jurisdictions, even though the majority of folks do live in the county. So that's really a big overview of the function of government. I'll just touch on a few things about Wake County that I think y'all will find interesting. The first is, as we all know, we're growing and we're growing at about 63 people a day. And there's no reason to think that we're going to stop growing anytime soon. And we're not just growing evenly across the county. And this is a 2020 map, we've produced a couple of newer maps since then, but you can take my word for it that they look somewhat similar to this. The hotspots in the same regions. What I will tell you is over the last five or 10 years, we've seen the hotspots of growth swoop south and east. So as Cary and Morrisville have started to run out of undeveloped land, we're seeing more activity in places like Apex and Holly Springs and Fuquay. And if I were a betting person, I would guess that Garner and Nightdale and others are, are going to see a lot more activity over the next 10, 15 years. But you can see hotspots really in every region of the county as we continue to grow. And those of you all who are traveling through those areas or live in those areas know that firsthand. Wake County does a lot with respect to economic development. And we had the best year on record just last year, not just with Apple. In fact, the Fujifilm announcement had more investment in our area last year than even the Apple announcement did. But you can see we are having an absolute banner year. These are the kinds of things that, you know, as an elected official, you wish would just be pasted everywhere throughout the county. Because we've really seen a lot of the good kind of growth in terms of good job creation. And we've put an emphasis on creating jobs across the economic spectrum. So this just, this isn't just, you know, $150,000 a year jobs that only people with graduate degrees qualify for. These are working class jobs, they're jobs that we push really hard to make sure pay a living wage. And in fact, we are increasingly reluctant to provide any incentives, you know, where we don't see a demonstrated commitment to paying a living wage. So we've had a great year in that respect, but we do that traditional economic development. In addition, we are doing more and more worker training. We have a fantastic engine through Wake Tech. And we, by the way, provide virtually all the funding for Wake Tech's new buildings and renovations. But also a fair portion of their operating budget as well. The Wake Works Program is one of the programs that we worked on a few years ago that provides paid apprenticeships by a private employer. And full Wake Tech scholarships, including books, tools, tuition, uniforms, you name it. For students who are enrolling in critical need professions where we have a real gap. So that includes things like EMS, but a lot of trade, skilled trades like plumbing, HVAC, electrician, those kinds of fields. Where we know we need extra folks and so it's really been a win win, not just for the businesses that we're helping cultivate here, but for workers to get the next, get to the next rung on the ladder or better provide for their families. Here you see a little bit more about our continued investment in the Wake County Public School System. When I came in, we were really seeing a lot of folks hurting and we still are in the, in the school system. And we know that we, you know, are tackling recruitment issues amid a very tight labor market. So that's not to be overlooked, but you can see that we have made good on our commitment to public schools and are continuing to increase our level of support. Frankly, as the state continues to fall down on its job on, in that regard. A couple of things we've seen come from that. Here you see that we've increased, it's probably in addition, above 40% now. The level of increase in school counselors, psychologists, social workers that we're seeing in our schools. We know that that's hugely needed and boy, is it needed ever more so as a result of the pandemic and kids trying to get back into the swing of things. So that's one thing we've done. We've also brought our school to nurse ratio from four to one, when I took office, to about two to one. Not where we ultimately want to end up, but boy, a huge difference in terms of our ability to keep our kids healthy. But boy, a huge difference in terms of our ability to keep our kids healthy and safe and provide services they need. We, last time I checked, had the highest level of teacher pay uh, in the entire state, the greatest local teacher salary supplement uh, and all sorts of different things where we've really become uh, even more of a superlative school system. Um, Don, you had talked about early childhood education. Yeah, we can't wait to have you on the team to continue working on that. One of the things that we realized a couple of years ago is that um, Wake County had been supplementing Smart Start, thank you Jim Hunt, more and more for the work that it, that it was doing to cover low-income four-year-olds. Um, we uh, realized that um, through the county's additional support, we now cover, we now provided enough support so that every single uh, four-year-old within 200% of the poverty line could access a free or almost free pre-K in Wake County. And that was a huge milestone for us. So knowing that, I think y'all just appreciate this. I called Gail Hayden, who's running our Wake County Smart Start program. And I said, well, what do we need to do now that we've hit this to get to the next level? And I was peppering her with questions right at the end of the workday. And I didn't know it at the time, but I was asking all these questions and brainstorming about what to do. She, when she was pacing in the back of a Harris teeter. And so finally, through the course of this conversation, we came to the idea of increasing uh, or expanding our services, expanding free uh, pre-K to low-income three-year-olds. And so um, we've worked that up. The, the commission was uniformly supportive of it. Um, and uh, in just about four weeks, you're going to see the first entering class in Wake County Three School, which is extending these priorities um, to low-income three-year-olds. And it turned out, we announced it totally by coincidence on the same day that President Biden announced that it was a priority for his administration to do the same thing uh, nationwide. So um, y'all heard it here that this started in the milk aisle of the Harris teeter. Um, but boy, is it gonna uh, you know, and you're a lot of benefits. Um, we've got a question about affordable housing coming up. I know Brian in a little bit, so I'll be brief here. Um, but uh, amid ever tightening um, uh, housing markets and amid increased costs of living nationwide, we have really pulled out all the stops to um, more than quintuple uh, the level of investment we make in affordable housing every year. Um, uh, Commissioner Adamson has really led the charge as the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee of the Board. Um, and I think really we have just moved mountains in this regard, but more on that in a little bit. Uh, and then uh, getting toward the end, I just wanted to highlight, we do a lot of really amazing things. And this is just a picture from one of our food security sites. Um, I think shortly before the pandemic, or I guess it would been done, it would have been during the pandemic, uh, judging from everybody's masks that they're wearing in the picture. We now provide um, about 30 schools, our 30 poorest uh, elementary and some middle schools in the county have universally free breakfast. Um, we provide summer meals for kids. We've even uh, embarked on services that deliver uh, free food to people's doors where they have transportation issues. These are the kinds of things that I think we have really just um, expanded to the point that um, I mean, we are so far beyond even what could have been imagined in 2014 when we first, when Democrats first took control of the board. It's really just been wonderful. Um, more on affordable housing here. This just shows that um, we set out a three-year goal about, about three years ago to create 2,500 new affordable housing units in Wake County. That's, it was a five-year goal we set three years ago and we hit it in year three, two years um, before the deadline. Um, and so now we're producing about 1,000 new units every single year. Um, uh, to try to curb uh, housing affordability issues in the county. In 2016, we passed a housing referendum uh, to triple bus service in Wake County and ultimately build a commuter rail line across the county. We are nearing uh, that, that tripling of bus service. And we are currently in the planning phases of not one, but two commuter rail lines running east-west and north-south uh, through the county uh, with the support and the help of the state and federal government. And that's really going to do a world of good for traffic, uh, but also for everyone's ability to get around. Um, and uh, of course, I mentioned the pandemic earlier and uh, this is our vaccination site, mass vaccination site at PNC Arena. Um, I mean, if you think about the logistical effort involved in vaccinating tens of thousands of people in a hurry. Um, it was just phenomenal and it was really one of the hardest moments, but one of the proudest moments uh, of Wake County, for in Wake County history to be able to engage in an effort of that scale. Uh, and all the data shows that we are so much better off, not just because of the lives um, that we've saved, but because we did it in such an effective and cost-effective and convenient way and um, provided people the safety that they needed. Last thing I'll just point out, uh, when you talk to your Republican friends about runaway tax rates and that sort of thing, we have done all of this um, by making again, smart investments in our community and our people and in our infrastructure. Um, and uh, we everybody passed their budgets by the end of last month, so we've got to update this a little bit, but it won't have changed very much. Wake County's tax rate is lower than two-thirds of the other counties in the entire state. So just keep, just when you have these conversations with folks who are worried about the tax rate, keep in mind that we have kept our tax rate markedly low, especially for a big urban uh, county that's really taking on a lot of work. And so we tried to be as effective as and as efficient with taxpayer dollars as we can be. So that was a lot and it was also fast. Um, but that's sort of an overview of some of the things that um, that we have done as a county. Um, Vicky, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to highlight. I know I ran a little bit long, but um, but I'll defer to you as to whether there's anything we should add here.
I think you got it. I think you, you about covered it. And, and just quickly, with our budget being almost $2 billion, it's almost 400 pages long. So it's hard to summarize what all services we do provide to our citizens.
Well, you know, on that note, uh, one of the questions that I, I wonder if you all get asked because of how extensive the services that the county commissioners do provide and the county provides. Is there anything uh, that might be surprising for us as citizens to learn that uh, that you all uh, fund or support or that the county provides? Vicky, it sounded like you have a, a thought about that.
Yeah, quickly, we um, right before the pandemic, our facilities per folks, because we have almost 200 buildings and 5 million square feet under roof that we support. And um, our facilities folks took me on a tour of some of the buildings. And what did I see? Snowplows. And I was like, why do we own snowplows? So we are responsible for plowing the roads in unincorporated Wake County. So to me, that was the most surprising thing because the state does interstates, the towns do their roads and we do unincorporated Wake County.
And the one thing I would add there is um, uh, you know, it's something that doesn't get a lot of attention. Uh, but uh, all those sanitation grades you see in restaurants, that's a county function. And in fact, a few years ago, we were the first local government in the country to partner with Yelp so that you could, when you see the restaurant reviews, you can see the sanitation grade uh, right on Yelp when you're trying to figure out where you're going to go to dinner that night.
Yeah, that's, that's good. It's not all about the, the stars. The grade is good to check out as well, too. So wonderful. Well, one of the questions that has come up uh, that perhaps all of you might want to address, but uh, you, you've talked a little bit about incorporated and unincorporated in the county. And when we talk about uh, incorporated, right, that means we have how many municipalities? 12 in Wake County, is that right? So uh, one question that we have on our mind is how all of you and those who've served on the board already, how will you draw on some of your past experiences to work together with our municipalities? Are there anything that uh, perhaps that uh, Dicky or Matt, that you could speak to where you've seen a good partnership or uh, Cheryl serving on the Apex Town Council? Um, but what are some of the, some of the ways in which you all anticipate working with the municipalities to advance uh, Wake County and services for our community? I'll just leave it open for anyone to, to, to chime in.
I'll, I'll chime in and just from experience, well, I think um, collaboration is in my DNA. And I think that's important when we're doing this type of work, you know, collaboration with our colleagues, but also our municipal colleagues as well as state and federal representatives and also our stakeholders in our community. But some examples of affordable housing is Apex has been a part of helping to bring some of those 2,500 units online. We hired a housing affordability manager just a year ago. And with the county's help, we have already gotten to um, completely affordable housing projects approved in Apex. One is the, the biggest in our history of our town. So affordable housing is a great opportunity for us to partner together with our municipalities for funding issues.
Also, if I could chime in, um, one of the things that the county does is uh, appoint people to different boards in the, the different municipalities. Uh, and I'll talk about that simply because that's where I am. I serve on the Wake County Board of Adjustment. But I also serve on the City Raleigh Board of Adjustment. Where I'm not appointed by the county commission to both of those boards. So therefore we must have a working relationship with all the different municipalities because we are our region, so to speak, and it's important for us to work together as a team. Uh, not only working with the municipality, but also working with the Wake County uh, legislative delegation. Uh, because one of the things people don't realize is that, that the authority that the county gets to operate and do things come from our state legislature. So therefore we must have a great working relationship and all three bodies must be working together as a team in order for us to continue move the cities forward and move Wake County forward as a whole.
The interest of Tom, I'm going to pass on that question.
Well, if we, uh, Commissioner Collabora, did you have a thought that you wanted to share?
I was just going to say, you know, I think if you, we do these intercity trips uh, as elected officials and you go to Boston or Austin or Dallas or Denver, wherever. And you see what's going on in those other places and you don't realize until you do that, that we are unique in the fact that all the major stakeholders don't always agree on everything, but we get along. So the municipalities and the county and the school system, um, the realtors and the home builders and the churches and the social justice community, we all talk on a pretty regular basis. We don't realize how good we've got it here, but um, that I think is a big part of the special sauce that makes this area um, so um, so great to be in. Um, and I think it's called for zealously protecting that climate.
I would just like to agree with that, Matt, wholeheartedly. Um, we have so much, I use this phrase a lot, intellectual capital in Wake County. We have so many smart people and so many compassionate people. And the more we work together, it's one thing our mayor Gilbert tells us all the time, we can do anything when we work together. And just to foster those uh, those partnerships, I think that the, the possibilities are endless, really. If we stay humble and kind and compassionate and respectful and reach out to all the, the partners that we have, we can really continue to, to move Wake County forward.
Uh, you're absolutely right, Cheryl. Cause one thing that I've done is I have attempted to reach out to all 12 of the uh, municipalities, the mayors and different council members because it's important for me as a candidate and more importantly, once I get on the board to understand what the different municipalities, their concerns are. You know, it's so easy to say, well, I think this, a, and you may be thinking correctly in terms of what the information that you have, but once you start to talk with the other municipalities, start to talk with our state legislators, then your, your uh, points increases in terms of your thought pattern, in terms of where you see things are. So it's very vital for us to continue to work together. Uh, uh, you know, and also uh, I enjoy working with them, uh, talking with them because they bring a different perspective in terms of things that I hadn't even thought about at times. So it's, I, I think it's important for us to continue to do that.
Well, it sounds like, you know, uh, a big topic on everyone's minds and, and Matt, you uh, alluded to this too, is affordable housing. And we started, you all started talking a little bit about that. What are some of the things that uh, you know, we, we know there are limitations to all governing bodies? What are maybe some of the limitations that you uh, run up that you anticipate while serving on the board, whether you've served on it or will serve on again? And, and are there also the solutions that we know that you all have gave great examples of solutions to drive affordable housing? Um, maybe what are some of the things, those limitations that we need to understand? Like, why can't the county commissioners just fix affordable housing? Why, why is that the case? Uh, help us understand that a little bit more and, and what, what are you all working on or, and hope to work on by serving on the board?
I'll, I'll start with that one. Um, the biggest limitation we have is land. We just don't have any place to put them. That's, that's really our, our biggest limitation. And one of the things we did a couple of years ago is we looked at all the land the school system had and that we had and that there was any potential to build on it. And we ranked them in order of priority of what was the most buildable to the least buildable. And we've actually built affordable housing on the top several. And one of the questions I get a lot is why did you put that affordable housing unit there? Why didn't you put it here or here? And the answer is wherever we can get land is where we build them. We're just like private builders. We're, we're in the same market they are. And um, and unfortunately, there's no way to build your way out of affordable housing. Cause, cause we are over 50,000 units behind. And I can't tax the, we, we just can't raise that much tax money. Although for every tax dollar we spend on affordable housing, we get about 11 in tax credits or match, some type of matching funds. So, so we get a lot of bang for our buck. And so we're doing a lot of really creative things. We're helping people get in their first homes. We've got um, if your home is in disrepair, if you, you know, qualify, well, we can grant you up to $20,000 to do major repair so you can stay in your home. We, we're trying to preserve people in their home, get as well as the rental units. And during the COVID, we had a really robust real assistance program and we literally kept thousands of people in their, in their rental situation um, through the, through the COVID shutdowns. And so we, 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 we have a department of 100 people who every day, all day work on affordable housing. And the last thing I'll say, and Cheryl can probably elaborate this lot more than I can. We, we, we define it as what we call the literal homeless, which is folks who are living where it was not meant for human habitation. That's the tent cities you see, that's people under bridges, abandoned houses. And then there's the homeless that are couch surfing. You know, their friends are letting them stay on their couches. But you know, they're maybe staying with a relative, but it's precariously housed. They could be just thrown out at any minute. And we get a lot of questions about our literal homeless folks. And unfortunately, a lot of those are fellow citizens and they are our fellow citizens of Wake County have a lot of other issues that, that need addressed. They need full wrap services before they could stay housed. And, and that sort of becomes the chicken and the egg. You know, we call it housing first. You know, if you house them and then you have to work on the other issues that, that will keep them housed. And it's, it's a, we call that permanentless supportive housing. And, and so we, what we have started doing, and those are very, very expensive units because it comes with all the wrap services. They need the support they need to stay housed. Um, so what we did was it two years ago, Matt, for we, of all the 10% of the units we build are permanent supportive. And typically the folks that go into those are coming from literal homelessness. And we have actually partnered, and we get as creative as possible with, with what we can do with affordable housing. And we've partnered with CASA in the city of Raleigh. And we're building, we're, we're patented after some housing in Charlotte. It's been really successful. And we got some land behind Wake Med and we're doing a complex that's 100 of 100 units of supportive housing. And of course, it's really close to services. And we anticipate the folks going into those units will be coming from literal homelessness. So, so that's a very exciting project that we're working on.
I would just like to add, I'm going to brag on Apex just a little bit more. Because we literally just started about a year and a half and we have really gotten some good work done. And again, I think it shows when you've got some like-minded people together working, you can really get some work done. We, our housing program manager has only been on board for a year. And we have created a housing affordability fund. We um, took, we take a penny and a half of property tax and created a housing affordability fund. We've done, we've sort of modeled a lot of what the county has done in Apex. We've created um, a rehab program to try to um, rehabilitate housing stock, to keep housing stock there. We also created um, a fund to help with utility assistance. We were the first municipality to not do disconnects when We were the first municipality to not do disconnects when COVID came and we were one of the last. So again, I'm bragging a little bit, but but Apex, we've done a lot and I'm really proud of my colleagues and I, and we've really teamed with the county for some affordable housing units. And we are happy to, I think, spread and collaborate with all the municipalities in Apex to help support other folks in the county who might need some help in, you know, their housing affordability work. It can be done, but you've got to, you know, make it, make it a priority and and work together.
The one thing I'll add, and this was a key insight that took me a few years to really figure out. No one has solved affordable housing. The quickest way for the mayor of any major city in the entire country to fill up their inbox is to stand up and say they fixed affordable housing in there. It does not happen. Because when we say affordable housing, really, we're talking about a nexus of about half a dozen issues. And so unlike, you know, so many other things, you know, people will say we have a great public transportation system, we have a great, you know, whatever. Affordable housing is always like that, is always a work in progress, and it's more acute now than in many times in history. But that's just a reality. And we've got two problems, a housing affordability problem, which means we need to work on planning and zoning so that everybody can live in housing that's affordable. And we hear it from middle-class folks, even, you know, folks who are doing just fine, that they're a little worried about affordability and cost of living. And then you have affordable housing, which is a dearth of government-supported units. And we usually talk about that second one, but that first one is just as important, it's just harder to wrap your mind around. And so one of the things that I think we'll see, and Vicki, you and I have had countless conversations about how to do this, is the county acting as a convener to see how we can work with municipalities about better planning and zoning so that we can promote density where we need it, increase the number of units, because it's a supply and demand game. And then also just promote affordability that way.
Also, I'd like to add that, you know, when we started talking about housing, not only are we talking about building houses, but we also try to deal with the issues. Because right now, we got between three to four thousand kids in Wake County Public Schools that are homeless, that are living in hotels and different places. We also have homeless veterans. And most time when you said homeless veteran, people first thought is we're just talking about the male. But we also have a lot of females veterans that are homeless. So therefore, we, my perspective and what I'm hoping that we can work on is a regional approach. Because Wake County, we are working towards a housing, Apex is working towards a housing program, Cary, Raleigh, everybody's working on different programs. And I'm hoping that we all can, as we talked about earlier, come together, let's let's sit down and just possibly look at a task force. And let's see what we can do as a whole in order to try to solve and resolve these issues. And as Matt said, there's no silver bullet to this. And it's going to take all of us working together, try to find a solution to affordable homes and try to make sure that we're taking care of all the citizens of Wake County. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're all seeking to be elected for, because we are concerned about the citizens of Wake County. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best job we can. And people say, wow, we glad that we selected those guys because they are happy and they are working for us.
As we, as I'm looking at the time here, I've gotten some great questions from some of our participants. And so I'm gonna ask a question that I'll let you, I'm gonna combine it and I'll let you all decide who wants to answer what question, if you will. But one, one of the questions came up is, in addition to affordable housing, a lot of people are concerned about investments in combating climate change. And how can we do that at the county level and what those green investments might be? And then another random question that's not related, so I'll let you all pick of who wants to talk about what. But a Holly Springs resident also talked about, you know, they appreciated when, of course, Apex leading the way with the non-discrimination ordinance. But of course, soon after, Wake County Board of Commissioners. How can we also empower citizens in Holly Springs to advocate for a non-discrimination ordinance is a, is a question. So we'll, we'll put those two random questions out there. However, whoever wants to tackle what, I'll leave that option for you all.
Do you want to do climate change and I'll do NDO?
Okay, that sounds good. So, and Vicki and I actually co-authored the NDO for the county. So I know, I know Vicki will be able to handle that issue well. On the climate change side, Wake County, a few, several years ago, passed a resolution, which is a directive to our government of four, of fourth, about forty five hundred employees now. That we need to be totally green by twenty fifty. Also means being about eighty percent of the way there by about twenty thirty five. And so we have had a lot of conversations about converting our fleet, putting in energy-saving measures, renewable energy credits, solar generation, working with the school system to do, you know, to outfit their facilities and find innovative financial models where we can work with private, the private sector to come in. You know, and they, you know, the private sector might pay for the upgrades and then they get a portion of the savings over a number of years. So we've really, I think, laid out a framework for us as a business, as an employer, and as an entity to really hit some pretty good goals. But we are always looking for additional ways to improve. You know, we are, we have some electric buses in our fleet in the, through Go Triangle that we've pushed for. You know, I hope that we expand that. So, you know, a lot of, and you know, we're even looking at things like, I mean, they've had solar ambulances out there. And so we're trying to test the viability of those sorts of things. You, you, we don't have as much regulatory authority on the private sector in this area. But a number one thing we can do is make sure that we are as clean as possible on our end. And are encouraging businesses to do the same. And that latter part, I think, we're increasingly doing through incentives that are keyed to socially beneficial behaviors, right? So if you want to get an economic incentive here, well, okay, you got to meet the traditional goals, but we'll give you extra if you have a lead silver building or, you know, whatever it is. To help, you know, nudge the private sector as well to move in the right direction.
And Matt, if I could just follow up real quick, what about, you know, one of our residents brought up a concern about HOAs restricting, like even solar panels? If that's a, who who would they raise that at, the county or a municipal or a state level?
Who would they raise that with?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. We always have an issue as to whether we, as a county, have jurisdiction to, you know, start legislating a given area. I would say wherever an HOA is located, I would go to their entity of government. It would be something that if it's in a municipality, you'd probably have to municipality. And then that municipality, that government can kind of evaluate whether they have authority in that region, in that area.
Right. Thank you for answering that. I think you had some thoughts about the NDO, and we know other municipalities haven't quite signed on with that either.
Well, quickly first, I was actually this morning at the groundbreaking for a new fire station EMS combo station in Morrisville. And we are building it fully solar, so it will be built fully solar is, is ready, ready to go. The the NDO was, I know a lot of our citizens asked why it took us from January to October to do it. And I call it the Lawyer Full Employment Act, because we wanted to know. And and it was funny, you know, Matt talked about he and I co-authored it. Well, he's a lawyer and I'm not. So, so that made for a lot of interesting conversations about what can we do and why can't we do it? And what, so, so what we did is sometimes it's better to go slow and have a much better product than go fast and not. So we, we, we literally, I think, had about every lawyer in this, in Wake County, look at it and give us their opinion of it. And of course, we worked with Equality NC, we looked at best practices. And we felt like, and we looked at it through the lens, and this is part of why it took so long. We looked at it through the lens of what will our municipalities think about it? Because if we create a document that we're the only ones that signs onto it, that only covers about twenty percent of our citizens, and we wanted more than that. So, so we created the NDO, we think it's a really good product. And what we did is we hired, we have a contract with Campbell Law School to actually work the claims. That gives the person a lot of confidentiality. And so what we did is we threw an incentive on the table that said if our municipalities will sign on, we, the county, would pay your claims for the first eighteen months. We'll pay the legal fees, you come under our contract. Because the thought is, you know, there's a front-loaded amount of claims and then they sort of taper off. Well, that actually was very effective to getting a lot of our smaller municipalities to sign on. And of course, Apex ended up signing on to ours to get the, the, the free legal for eighteen months, which was great. And thank you for being first and thank you for joining us. And we, we, and there's three municipalities that have currently not signed on, which is Wake Forest, Holly Springs, and Fuquay. And from our perspective, we really can't force them to do it. It's a municipal decision. And, you know, the best thing is for the citizens there to keep letting their elected officials know that they want to join it. That they want to be part of our NDO. And and I really don't see anything really offensive about it. It just basically says in a public accommodations, anybody who shows up, you have to treat them like everybody else. So if you're a restaurant, you have to treat all your customers equally, is, is, is basically all it says. Matt, did you want to add anything about the NDO?
I think you got it. I mean, this is one of those things where I think folks, especially, you know, Republicans or, you know, people who are worried about backlash. You know, when you do it, it's like you kind of wince and wait for the bomb to go off and then nothing bad happens, right? And then you wake up tomorrow and everybody's fine. And I think this is one of those where, you know, we didn't know what kind of mail we were going to get. And I think the feedback has been resoundingly positive. And what we see, and I think this is going to help in the long run. I mean, I think there's got to be a constant conversation about it. But what we see is the big employers, I mean, these like blue ribbon employers that we want to create jobs here. They all want, they all want a non-discrimination ordinance. They don't want to see us fighting over this. They don't want to see another HB two. They don't want to see any of this stuff. And so I I'd be curious about the day when they start speaking out. Because I think by and large, what we're going to see is that not only does this benefit residents, but businesses want it too. And so increasingly, I suspect, over the weeks or months or years or whatever it may take, you're going to, you're going to start to see three hundred and sixty degrees. You know, every, everybody in the community and all the different stakeholders are going to be kind of saying the same thing. And I think that's going to matter, but I think it's going to take a while for that to cool us.
Well, as we, as I'm looking at time and we're going to wrap up, I'm gonna give Cheryl and Dawn the last final words. And then Matt and Vicki, anything else that you'd like to say? And so, so Dawn and Cheryl, the floor is yours as we go to the the polls in November and see two new names on the ballot for Wake County Board of Commissioners. Anything that you'd like to say to our participants tonight?
Well, Cheryl, you've been delayed. I'll wait for you.
You're very kind. Thank you. I I did brag about my Apex. So yes, Apex has not solved housing affordability. I just want to make sure. I didn't try to communicate that we have, because we have it. But I did want to communicate that when we work together and we can really make some change happen. And then, like Don said, I'm all for, you know, us working together to help, help Wake County, you know, improve on all these issues that we need to work on. And I just want to thank all of you for your support, for, to the county, to all of our Democrat voters and unaffiliated voters too, who come out to support us and in our values. And so, as I said earlier, I'm just really looking forward to this opportunity of what I call expanded public service and working for the people of Wake County and working with these amazing board members. And again, my website is cherylforapex.com.org.com. I should know that off the top of my head, but feel free to reach out to me if I can be of any service to you all. And I appreciate your support on the campaign trail between now and November. Thanks.
Again, Brian, just thank you so much for hosting this event tonight and all of those online. You know, this has been very gratifying just for the four of us to come together and have a conversation with the citizens of Wake County. It's so important for us to understand and appreciate the concerns of all the citizens of Wake County. When you start looking at the size of our county, and we talk about eight hundred and fifty six square miles, right at around one point one, one point two million people. Pretty much the size of the state of Iowa. So you can see that we, we are a large organization in terms of what we do and what we manage. And it's so important that we have the support of the citizen as we move forward. You know, you'll hear me talk a lot about as we continue to campaign, which I refer to as the big three. And the reason I talk about that, because that's where the greatest portion of our county resources are being utilized. And we start talking about education, we start talking about our safety, we start talking about health and human services. So there's a great portion of our county resources are spent on those three items. And we must make sure that we are taking care of our citizen. And when we start talking about education, we're not only talking about Wake County Public Schools, but we also talk about Wake Tech. So there are funds that we make sure we take care of there. We talk about safety, we talk about our Wake County jails, we talk about EMS. You know, because I was saying, when you've got a county this large, and you got to make sure that you're providing services for people regardless of where they're located. And make sure we got EMS able to respond. And of course, Matt and Vic and those are already on the board, they've done a wonderful job in terms of increasing the salary for our EMS workers. One of the things that we also want to continue to work towards, and that's working with Willie Rose, since he's going to be our next sheriff, is making sure that we continue to fund our sheriff department, because they got to cover that eight hundred and fifty six square miles. And also making sure that we are doing something to make sure that we are protecting all our citizens throughout Wake County. And we can't say enough for our health and human, our services, because they do a fantastic job in terms of providing services for all the citizens of Wake County. So just remember to support me, Vicki, Matt, and Cheryl as we move forward. And we're looking forward to November the eighth, and when we all sit down and come together and say thank you for all y'all's support. And we can move forward as a team and make sure we're doing what we best can in order to represent all the citizens of Wake County. So donmyle.com, and we appreciate you guys being online with us tonight. Thank you.
Wonderful. And Matt and Vicki, anything else you all would like to add?
I'll just quickly add, Brian, if you would like, I know we're out of time and I know there was questions in the chat we need to get to. If you'd like to close the recording part, I'd be happy to stay and ask the questions of the people, you know, who are in our audience who didn't get their questions answered. I'm more than happy to do that.
Right.
Now, just to say thank you all for sticking it out with us. I think this has been a great conversation. And I don't, Vicki, I don't think you'd mind me saying this, but all of us would appreciate your support. We're all always raising money. We're all going to have volunteer opportunities and some joint volunteer opportunities this fall. But this cycle, I really want to encourage everybody who's on this call and who may watch this later to really do what we can to support Cheryl and Dawn. Vicki's going to be okay. That, you know, she's
Tough opponent.
You know, I, I, I've got a race, but, you know, I've been doing this a while. And Cheryl and Dawn have really led a lifetime of acquitting themselves honorably and making a very positive name for themselves. But we want to make sure that they do as well as we, you know, they possibly can countywide. We want them to not just win, we want them to intimidate next time around so that they can be Vicki shoes running unopposed. So I'd really encourage everybody to do what we can for, for Cheryl and Dawn coming up this election season. And Vicki and I certainly will be.
Thank you.
And I recommend running unopposed. It's actually kind of
If only we, if only everyone had that luxury, right? So that's great. Well, thank you again. Thank you to our panelists and our future commissioners. We are excited for you all and look forward to turning out the vote. Thank you for all of our participants who were able to come out tonight. Our next Civic Conversations project, or our next Civic Conversation hosted by the Wake County Democratic Party, will be with the school board. What, the School Board of Education of Wake County. And so, again, we hope to have a little bit of understanding of why that race is going to be so critical this fall. We know it's always important, but why in particular this year? It's going to be so important for Democratic voters to get out and vote for a school board and hear from some of our candidates who will be running for school board. So I hope all of you can join us again in August, and there will be more details on the mobilize site. But until then, thanks, everyone, and have a great night.